Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome everyone to the Bangor School Committee Regular Meeting. Today is Thursday, October 13th. It's five past seven. If you would please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, the supreme justice for all.
Thank you all. Superintendent Tager, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No adjustments.
Okay, public comments. And as a reminder, members of the public may address the school committee for up to three minutes on school and education matters. Complaints or allegations concerning specific employees or students will not be allowed, but will be addressed through established policies and procedures. Public comments shall be directed to the school committee and be brief and not repetitive. The school committee's practice is not to respond or debate with speakers during the public comment period. The superintendent or his staff will follow up on comments outside of the meeting as appropriate. And before starting, please state your name and place of residence. And we have a public comment tonight. And please state your name and place of residence.
I have something for you first.
Okay. Sure, sure, thank you.
Hi, my name's Jamie Beck and I live at Ten Linden. I am here following up on an email that I had sent to the council on August 9th of this year, talking about this professional development opportunity, which I am highly recommending and strongly urging the council to make some policy around executive dysfunction training. This training, Smart But Scattered. I got this in the mail, this flyer. There is an upcoming training in December in Portland, which cued me to remember. I wanted to follow up with you guys about that. For everybody in the room, including the council, everybody's got kids, everybody deals with kids, just take a second and think about these statements. In the past two months since we've started school, have you noticed any kids who've had difficulty paying attention, been easily distracted, required many reminders to stay on task, find it difficult to set goals, seem to struggle with making decisions, focus on either details or a big picture at the expense of another, have difficulty getting started on tasks, and often seems to procrastinate? That's like every kid, right? Needs numerous prompts from adults to stay on task, forgets to turn in completed work, loses track of time or assignment due dates, struggles with keeping track of needed materials, forgets the details of a text while reading or soon after finishing, gets frustrated with challenges in schedule or school routines, has difficulty shifting from one activity to another, gets stuck on parts of tasks and can't move forward, seems to have difficulty controlling impulses or will say or do things without thinking about them first, or is easily frustrated. These are just some of executive dysfunction skills that we could see with kids, just some of them. That covers almost any kid in our schools. A lot of it probably has to do with the pandemic, but guess what? It's not going to go away. We have to do something about it. Kids who have diagnoses that involve executive dysfunction, Russell Barkley says that there's a 30% rule. If you think about a 10-year-old who has executive skill dysfunction, they're actually functioning with executive skills like response inhibition, not being, not holding themselves back from doing something, emotional control, sustained attention to a task or task initiation. That 10-year-old is actually functioning as a seven-year-old. So if you're asking that fourth grader to function as a fourth grader, they're more like a second grader, right? So there is a huge disparity and it's 30%. So as they get older, that gap widens. Everybody in a school needs to know about executive skill dysfunction and know how to appropriately, I know that was my three minutes, right? Whoops. I promise I practiced this beforehand. I'm wrapping it up. Please, 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 I'm strongly urging you, executive skill dysfunction training, especially with Peg Dawson, please make that a possibility and mandatory. Thank you.
So we'll move on to superintendents' proposals and updates. We have an action item. We have first reading of the Comprehensive Emergency Plan. Superintendent Tager.
Thank you Chair Austin. I'm recommending first reading of the Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan. Included in the packet is the public portion of the plan. If you'd like to view the confidential portions of the plan prior to the next meeting, please contact Lori Mitchell.
Okay, and can I get a motion, please? Second? Okay, any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Next, we have informational items. The first item is the MSBA Proposed Resolutions.
In May, the committee elected Vice Chair Tim Surratt as a delegate and Member Sarah Luciano as the alternate to the MSBA Delegate Assembly. The Delegate Assembly will be held virtually at 9:30 a.m. on Saturday, October 22nd, 2022.
I think you're, one of these is, yeah, is that better? Okay, thank you. Okay, sorry, Member Surratt, go ahead.
Yes, so I, a few months ago, the committee elected me to be the delegate and I, of course, really appreciated that. Some professional and personal obligations came up and Member Luciano has graciously stepped in and she's going to be our delegate at the October 22nd meeting from 9:30 to 12:30 and it will be held via Zoom video conference. A few weeks ago, I had an opportunity to meet with other delegates from school boards and school committees regionally, Herman, Hamden, several others. And the, the meeting was held through Zoom and it was led by Steve Bailey and he reviewed the various resolutions that are going to be voted on at the October 22nd meeting. I was able to get a recording of that meeting and I sent that to all of you. And I guess what I would say, and if Member Luciano thinks we should do something different, I'm open to different ideas, but what I was thinking was if any of you had questions or suggestions related to any of the revisions to existing resolutions or the new resolutions that you could, you could communicate them to us now, or if you needed additional time to think about them, get them definitely to Member Luciano, but you could certainly CC me as well. And, and then we could pass that information along to Steve Bailey. And it's also going to be great information for Member Luciano to have as she attends the Delegate Assembly on October 22nd. So I guess I would leave it, leave it up to you if, if there's questions or suggestions about any of the resolutions that you want to ask now. Happy to jot those down, pass them along. If not now, please do reach out to us. Does, does that, Member Luciano, does that sound, that make sense?
Yep, no, that sounds great. Thanks.
So does anyone have any comments or feedback for Vice Chair Surratt? Okay, and I want to thank you for all your hard work on this. I know he's been emailing us all, so thank you. Okay, moving on to report of reassignments for school year 2022, 2023.
I'm reporting the following teacher reassignments for the school year 2022, 2023. Melissa Bartholomew from Speech Language Pathologist at James F. Doughty School to Speech and Language Pathologist at Point 5 James F. Doughty School, Point 2 Fruit Street School, Point 2 Down East School, and Point 1 Vine Street School.
Thank you. And next, we have report of retirements.
I'm reporting the following retirements. Barbara Weiss, Speech Language Pathologist, Bangor High School. Edward Hackett, Principal, James F. Doughty School.
Thank you. And next, we move on to business action items. We have action items. The first thing is minutes for the regular meeting of September 28, 2022.
I'm recommending approval of the draft minutes of the September 28, 2022 Regular School Committee meeting.
So moved. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Motion passes seven zero.
Next, we have personnel and we have extra duty assignments.
I'm recommending committee approval of the following extra duty assignments for the school year 2022, 2023. Parker Sanderson, First Year Head, Boys JV Ice Hockey, Bangor High School.
Okay, can I get a motion, please? Second. Any discussion and, and Member Sprague?
Thank you. I just want to disclose to the group that Parker Sanderson is my coworker and also my friend. I don't know if that constitutes a conflict of interest, but while I have the floor, I also want to note what a good hire this is for the school department. Parker's a Bangor High School graduate and I was just looking up his stats and in 2013, he scored 25 goals and had 26 assists in 17 games for Bangor High School. And he was the Travis Roy Maine State Hockey Player of the Year. But amongst all that, he's an even better person and I can't think of a better person to be coaching the boys at Bangor High School and the JV team. So I have self-conflicted myself into commenting after disclosing that I potentially had a conflict, but it's out there now, so I'm going to support this unless the group thinks I have a conflict of interest and then I'll just stay quiet.
Well, call it good. All in favor?
Motion passes seven zero, thank you.
Thank you. And Members Surratt, you have donations today.
To Down East School from Lamy Wellahan, winter boots having a total dollar value of $1,300. To Down East School from the Bangor Elks Lodge, number 244, dictionaries for grade three students having a total dollar value of $500. To Fruit Street School from the Bangor Elks Lodge, number 244, dictionaries for grade three students having a total dollar value of $144. To Fruit Street School from Varney Incorporated, 40 pairs of LL Bean snowshoes having a total dollar value of $3,168. To Abraham Lincoln School from St. Paul the Apostle Parish, My New Shoes Program, 12 pairs of sneakers and socks having a total dollar value of $250. To Abraham Lincoln School from the Bangor Elks Lodge, number 244, dictionaries for grade three students having a total dollar value of $110. To Vine Street School, anonymously, a cash donation to support students' needs through the social worker, having a total dollar value of $250. To Vine Street School from the Charleston Church, backpacks and school supplies having a total dollar value of $300. To Vine Street School from Nicholas and Aaron Martinez, a cash donation to kindergarten students, and 21st Century Coloring Club having a total dollar value of $250. To Vine Street School from Lori Stocker, games, books, and school supplies to support students, having a total dollar value of $200. To Fairmount School from Augustine and Nagozzi Christopher, a cash donation to support academic programs, having a total dollar value of $100.
And with lots of gratitude, that's wonderful, thank you. Can I get a motion, please? Second. And all in favor?
Passes seven zero.
And next, we have introduction items and I'm wondering if we can take all of these together unless anyone has any objections? Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. So we have first reading of policies. Revised Policy AC, Non-Discrimination and Affirmative Action. Revised Policy BCA, Organizational Meeting. Revised Policy BCE, Subcommittees. Revised Policy BDDH, Public Participation at Public Committee Meetings. Revised Policy GCBDA, Family and Medical Leave. Revised Policy GCCA, Recruiting and Hiring of Administrative Staff. And Revised Policy IMDC, Cultural and Religious Holidays.
Thank you. I'm recommending first reading of the revised policies. Revised Policy AC, Non-Discrimination and Affirmative Action. Revised Policy BCA, Organizational Meeting. Revised Policy BCE, Subcommittees. Revised Policy BDDH, Public Participation at School Committee Meetings. Revised Policy GCBDA, Family and Medical Leave. Revised Policy GCCA, Recruiting and Hiring of Administrative Staff. Revised Policy IMDC, Culture and Religious Holidays.
Can I get a motion, please? Second. Any discussion or questions about any of these? All in favor?
Motion passes seven zero, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have committee updates. Any comments or questions from the committee? Member Surratt.
I, I want to wish all retirees a wonderful retirement, but I especially want to recognize Ed Hackett and wish him the best in retirement. I had the privilege of working with Mr. Hackett when I was a science teacher at the James F. Doughty School. He was an excellent mentor. He's had a huge impact on that school and the community that that school serves, so I want to wish him the best. Thank you.
And Member Sorg?
Yes, not only to Mr. Hackett, but to Mrs. Weiss at Bangor High School. I had the honor and privilege of working with both of them for 18 years and they have truly been an asset to our system. So I wish them well.
Thank you. Yes, and congratulations to both Mr. Hackett and Mrs. Weiss. Any other comments, questions? Okay, moving on to committee or representatives' reports, actually. Member Sorg?
Yes, my favorite topic, UTC. Love it, great place to be. We had our board meeting October 6th. We couldn't quite have enough for a quorum, but we met anyway because the director out there, Mrs. Peterson, had some issues that we needed to discuss. And one of them, which is nearly dear to my heart, is the ninth and 10th grade exploratory program that is going into the public schools in many communities in our area. One is in Old Town. Ninth and 10th grade at Old Town now have 71 students enrolled in that exploratory program and they are not as large as Bangor High. So Bangor, now take that 71 students, they add to the total enrolled at UTC of 755 students. Hamden next year is going to take up this exploratory program. It is sponsored by the state. UTC has to apply for the funds to provide it. They hire the staff and the staff teaches and the schools like Old Town, Hamden, and maybe someday Bangor, house the program in their system. And I am much in favor of this, having a child in the system, grandson actually, that is more hands-on student than he is a strict learner, book learner. UTC's programs are 40% book learning, academic, and 40% hands-on. So Kason's in automotives, I hate to say his name, but he's, he's a good kid. He's in automotives, he loves it, hands-on, he comes home greasy. And then the other 20% is social skills to help students be, like, how would I say this? Customer service would be the best way I put it. Okay, like when you go to a garage, like I go to Rockliff's at Hamden, the guys are always there waiting on it. And this is social skills that they learn to do, which is something that we don't always get in just a straight academics. So what I like about UTC is, I said, 40, 40, and 20, it's, it's a great program. So I am hoping that when Director Peterson comes on the 26th, she'll talk more about this. UTC is a great place, I can't advocate it for enough, I just think it's a great place. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Sorg. And we will have new assignments at our reorganizational meeting on November 14th. And so we'll have new representatives and new representative reports at that time and afterwards. Member Sada, do you have student committee member updates?
Yes, I do, thank you. It's a busy week at the high school. Yesterday, students took the PSATs and the SATs, those were the options, and there was a lot of, there were activities for seniors who weren't taking the SATs such as tours at local colleges like Yumein and Hassan, I think. Also, it's Spirit Week, so students have been dressing up according to themes and homecoming will, the homecoming game will happen at the end of the week and the homecoming dance is going to happen at the end of the week. I've heard that the elementary schools are preparing for a lot of fall festivals and activities and they're teaming up with the high school to get volunteers for that, which is very nice. I also want to bring up, The Rampage, which is Bangor High School's newspaper, had this great new initiative where student reporters submitted their own personal college essays so that students around the school could be inspired and see what their classmates are doing. And I think, I just want to thank those students because I think it's really useful for a lot of people. The honor societies are starting up with their applications, National Honor Society, the World Language Honor Society, ROKAPAS Social Studies Honor Society, and the English Honor Society. They'll have their inductions in the next month or so. And the debate team will have its first tournament at Lincoln Academy this weekend. The team is always looking for judges, so if anyone's interested in volunteering to judge a tournament in the future, you can contact the debate coach, Mr. Leland. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it. And then next, we have information items. We have several important dates coming up. We have Wednesday, October 26th, 2022, regular meeting here, 7:00 p.m. in Council Chambers. Monday, November 14th, 2022, our reorganizational meeting, 11:00 a.m., Council Chambers. Wednesday, November 16th, 2022, we have our board training workshop, 5:30 p.m., Council Chambers. November 16th, another regular meeting, 7:00 p.m., Council Chambers. And then finally, Wednesday, November 30th, 2022, regular meeting, 7:00 p.m., Council Chambers. Any final questions, thoughts, comments from the committee? Member Mendel?
Yeah, I just wanted to, to bring up the report that came out the other day, the main Wabanaki Studies report that found that most main schools are failing in teaching Wabanaki studies. So, and I know that Bangor was one of this, one of the school systems that was, that was interviewed or asked for data. So I was just wondering, I, I kind of went through the study superficially or the report superficially, I was just wondering if we could get an update on what we're doing in that area and if we have holes that we need to fill in, like how, how are we doing?
Sure. Superintendent Tager?
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. Kathy and I spoke about that today. If you want to share the conversation we had, that'd be great.
So I think actually we're doing a good job, not great, fabulous, but actually a very good job. If you look through the report, Bangor was represented favorably in that they, we had report outs that were, were good. I want to tell you that third grade is when it really starts. We have it integrated throughout some social studies, we have a unit in third grade. Fourth and fifth is integrated throughout the social studies units. That's where I think we need most of our work in those two grade areas. Six through eight, we did a tremendous amount of work over the summer and I feel like very proud of the work that's going on that we've done in that. And that is integrated throughout the entire year and it addresses every single point that they said in that report. The high school, I also feel is very strong and I have had to make my notes here. They offer a continuation throughout the courses of Geo-Civics and U.S. History and that represents about 70% of the students at Bangor High that take that. They also have a U.S. History and Native Perspectives course. And in the spring, which is really cool, is they're offering an actually Wabanaki language course. So I feel Bangor is doing, we're, we're holding our head high in a lot of this area, so.
I think that the language course in the spring too is brand new, so they were not aware of that when they did the study, but I think that's a really nice compliment to the high school and to Kathy's work. And I think, as Kathy said first, there's always more work to do. And I believe in November, we're going to possibly restart our DEIB committee, so that's an area that we could continue to look at.
Go ahead. Will that Wabanaki language class, will that count as a world language in?
Stealing our thunder.
So, yeah, we had, came across an opportunity, it was actually out of a professional reading and then a local individual who was in a program that's out of MIT, which that caught my attention immediately. I mean, think of NASA Science Technology coming out of MIT, but there was interesting master's program for native speakers who were seeking access to schools that were welcoming, seeking themselves opportunity to address native languages. The, started with Mr. Wingard and the department head, Mary Sushuling, in languages. We were lucky to find somebody that was advancing through this program and by the second semester of this year would be in position to be considered a graduate of that program. So we put together a proposal, we identified a slot in the schedule, we decided it was viable in all kinds of ways. So our plan was, was going to work with the superintendent to define a time when we could come and propose. We've already set aside funding for it. We're setting it up, really it now is experiential. I think it would be considered a world language. We're considered as kind of a pilot. We'd like to offer it. The way we set it up is under a consultancy with the person who's trained in the language, delivered by Zoom, but have the presence in the classroom, a world language certified teacher. We would offer it for elective credit, or the opposite half of when we currently offer Chinese history and culture, which we've tried all kinds of different ways to expose students to Chinese and to grow numbers, students who matriculate into Chinese one and two. And that's by far been the most successful approach, do an exploratory or a survey course, demystify. So anyway, we've got a second half of that course that's basically an open semester, that's where we intend to slot it in the spring, have it be for elective credit now, but if it works right and the, I mean, I just think it's interesting to, to be able to offer that, to explore it, but if all of the things work as we hope they will and with your approval, of course, we look to have a more coordinated experience in the year. So it's pretty cool. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Members Surratt?
Thank you. I just want to mention, last Thursday, I had the opportunity to attend the Abraham Lincoln School Spooktacular Book Fair event and it was put on by the PTO. It was a lot of fun. There were, I bet 100 kids there and a lot of adults and I want to thank Principal Shaw, she was there and it was, it was a great event, a lot of fun.
I also crashed that event, so it was great, thank you. Thanks for, thanks for that PTO and for letting me just show up with my family.
Okay, well, thank you all so much. And I would like to go to executive session for the purpose of a personnel discussion pursuant to one MRSA 4056A. Can we vote to go in? Please, can I get a motion? Second. All in favor?
Passes seven zero.
Okay, and the rest of you are dismissed? Thank you all. Okay. And the rest of you are dismissed. Thank you all.
Hey, Mrs. Se.
Short and sweet. This will be too. He's got some more information, Jerry, so it'll be good. Yeah, so you would log out now?
Okay, and I need to-- a motion for adjournment please.
Move.
All in favor?